Okay, good morning, and I'll call the order of the February 5th regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be our pledge of allegiance, and after that we'll have a moment of silence. I don't see our pastor here this morning, so if we would, everyone please stand for the pledge.
concerning the approval of the execution and delivery of the contract, the county's financing of the project, and the granting of a security interest in the mortgage property. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our county manager, Brian Moorhead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing on the jail, and in two weeks, you will have what the LGC Local Government Commission terms as initial findings resolution, meaning that there's a need for the jail, and in your, as the board, it's your opinion that it's best to finance the cost, either that we don't have enough cash to just pull out and pay cash for it, and actually authorize staff to go out and select bond counsel and financial advisors, and work through the rating agencies, and all of those things that we've been working on. This is a non-binding resolution that you'll consider in two weeks, but it is the first step for the LGC to make sure that the Board of Commissioners supports and has authorized staff to pursue this project. You've already done one of these initial findings back in 2021, when the school board renovated what we called Annex Two. The Commissioners had to approve an initial findings resolution for that project. You did it again in 2023 for this jail project, but because the bids came in much higher than what we had thought, and it's now been a year the LGC had asked for the board to consider initial findings again. We advertised the construction costs to be an estimated $28.5 million. We since then have received our final GMP, that guaranteed maximum price from Vinoi Construction, and it's just under $27.5 million. Now, that's total construction costs. That doesn't factor in some of the soft costs that we have already had, such as architect and engineering fees, permit fees, all of those things. But the construction costs that now Vinoi has vetted is at 27, and just under 27.5. That's all I have, unless there's any questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
Brian, what we got invested in that now?
Overall, I don't have an up-to-date figure. You know, the contract with the architect was about $1.8, $1.9 million. We've also had some environmental costs, where we've done some soil sampling and some testing as far as what's in the ground. Of course, we've got some legal fees, and those things, we'll have all of that kind of accounted for and to you at the next meeting when we have that resolution on the agenda. I would, just ballparking, I'm guessing we're under $2.5 million total, but I'll have a firm number for you next week, or two weeks.
That's not part of the 27.5 million, correct?
Right, that, 27.5 is the construction costs, not the soft costs.
If we go ahead with this project, what would you estimate that the rest of the costs could be like? Future employees, maintenance, and all that kind of stuff?
We know that we'll have to phase in employees. I haven't talked with the sheriff yet, because, you know, the construction, if we start, and we're hoping to start the end of, or middle of March, that build is going to be about 18 months, if everything goes according to plan. So it will actually be fiscal year '26, maybe into '27, as we start to fund operating. We know we'll have costs for heat, lights, water, increasing insurance. There will be some staffing as we exceed the current jail and we move into the new phase, but a lot will depend on jail population, and if we have to add employees in batches of two, four, six. However, we need to add employees to open up the pods.
Construction started and everything up there, are we going to have to replace anything that's in the Hazelwood location now, like the garage or the other buildings?
This phase of the project is only geared towards the jail expansion. You bring up an interesting point, because that site is really tight. There's a lot of operations on a small footprint. We know the Hazelwood Convenience Center continues to be more and more traffic through that site. Our garage facilities are tight, and we also have facilities and maintenance over there. So that, if there's a consideration to move forward with relocating those, that would be way after we start this project and get closer to completion.
Existing jail we've got right now, are we going to have to do anything to it right now, or?
In that number, in that 27 million, that GMP number, we actually have some funds to go back and do some renovations of the existing jail, as far as some security upgrades, some layout. We have money for a new roof, so yes, there are some funds in that 27.5 that will go towards the existing facility.
Hit up the state standards and stuff?
Yes, it is. This would just be considered maintenance, things that almost a 20-year-old jail needs to have done regularly.
Yeah, I think it was, most of that's for safety, for employees, for employees and then for the inmates, I guess, or detainees.
Safety for both, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so I'll open up for public comment. So we're going to have a public comment session, a regular public comment session, but this is just public comment for the jail, okay, for the jail expansion. So if you would, limit your comments to three minutes, and I will, I have one person that signed up to speak. Her name was Susan Trahan. You can come on up, Susan. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry if I missed your name.
No problem. It's an uncommon last name. So I'm here because, as a county taxpayer, I object to borrowing funds to expand the jail, and I have five reasons why. The first is that the total amount to be borrowed, the interest rate, and the plan to refinance the balance if and when the rates go down has not been communicated fully to the public. Second, no plan has been communicated for addressing construction cost overruns. We know there are always construction cost overruns. Will they be addressed by paying increased money for the construction, or will we be removing features from the expanded jail or from the renovation that was just talked about of the existing facility? Third, and Mr. Ramey, I do appreciate your comments on this, but a projection and a budget and a plan for running the facility once the build has been completed has not been presented to the taxpayers. What will the impact of the ongoing cost of running the larger jail infrastructure be on the taxpayers, excuse me, taxpayers? Mind you, we'll be paying to run the jail on top of paying off the debt to build it. Fourth, alternative plans such as housing prisoners at neighborhood, or neighboring jails have not been presented. Surely, it's less expensive, and I know this is a really simplistic analysis, but less expensive to buy and staff a vehicle or two than it is to build and staff a jail. So even if the county buys two vans and say, dreaming big, it costs a million dollars a year to buy and staff each of those vans, and $500 a night to house a prisoner elsewhere, that's 52,000 prisoner nights, or over 142 years that it would take to pay back the construction costs alone that are being budgeted. And I just, it's simplistic, but how does that make sense? And then fifth, there are limited county resources available to address mental health issues at a time when the mill has shut down and brought stress on local families who have had to take replacement jobs frequently at reduced wages. Couldn't the funds be better utilized to help with mental health issues that are in our community, and to help the contributing members of our society, not the detained members of our society? And then finally, there are existing county facilities that aren't being fully maintained, and I think it's important that we protect the facilities that we already have instead of existing, and existing infrastructure that will no doubt need to be maintained. So I feel strongly that the future growth in Haywood County should not be based on housing detained people, and I urge you to consider alternative solutions to this issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anyone else care to address the board? Just state your name, if you would, maybe where you're from.
My name is Joslyn Schaefer. I'm a resident of Haywood County. First, I want to thank you all for your public service. I do think it's a vocation, and I appreciate your time and your energy and your compassion for this county. I wanted to state my opposition to the expansion of the jail. I want to highlight the beginning benefits that we're starting to see with the drug court, which I know isn't under your jurisdiction, but I'm hoping that that will continue to grow in its success. And I also wanted to note that as we struggle from time to time with higher census, I wonder if that couldn't be kind of a bellwether for us to wonder what's going on in other pockets of our community, and how can we work together with community partners, and strengthen families, and schools, et cetera, et cetera, so that as that gets above 110, or whatever the current ceiling is, we can begin wondering strategically, okay, where are some other areas where we can apply and work with other government agencies to apply funds? So I'm very sympathetic to what my fellow citizens said in terms of not wanting my taxes to go toward not only the construction, but then the ongoing maintenance and operation of a new jail. But I also think there's an invitation for us to do some self-examination as a community when that census gets above consistently, where we're having to ship prisoners out to be cared for by other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Ain't no one, oh, yeah, no, Dale, is this on the jail? No. We'll have a public comment in a minute. Okay, that's okay. Okay, all right, see no one, I'll close that public comment session, and we'll move on to our public comment session. And so Dale, you can come on up. You signed up to speak.
I'm way behind. Thank you.
Yeah, pull the mic down there.
Thank you for allowing me to come. As January the ninth, we got flooded again by the pigeon and Mother Nature. As usual, I've been trying for over a year to get my congressman for the state and my other person. I've been promised there's going to be a callback, but the state is broke. We've got plenty of money, and I love football. Now, we can get a football field, or if it's a walkway, the other parts of the community can get their road fixed if they take the walkway. And I'm proud to say that I like up the river they stood to a ground. But there's approximately 500 homes in Chambers Mountain, Thompson Cove, and Thickeady that cannot get to their homes, their kids. And it's, I've been getting run around, of course, I'm one of my statue, that's normal, but for over a year, and would appreciate if the Commissioners might help us. There's approximately 1.2 tenths of a mile of a road, existing road that comes up by the interstate, would not come on the interstate and bother the traffic, little grading and paving that people could use to get out. Now, my uncle was a strong Democrat. He said they've been going to do this since 1967. Well, it's not done yet. But we need help, and I would appreciate it maybe if the Commissioners might could help us to get it started, or find out what we could do. Because when you get stuck in that part of Chambers Mountain and Thompson Cove and parts of Thickeady, you're stuck. We had emergencies, two floods before a guy had to be flown out. But we pay taxes in that part of the county too, and I know parts of that river still not finished. These people deserve it too. But if you travel the county, that part of the section of the county is stuck. It could be fixed. Not everybody, but 99.9% of the people could get in and out of their homes in emergency vehicles. But thank you for listening to it. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Dale. Brian, if you would, and Amy, would you, I think everybody would agree, can we do a resolution to the, I guess, to the DOT, and we'll send it to our elected state representatives, that we'd like for them to take a, analyze that situation and try to come up with a solution. I've talked with Dale, and I know some solutions that, you know, personally, what I think we can do, but it'd be good if the DOT would take a look at that stuff. So if you would, just draft a resolution, and we'll send that to everybody. Does anybody, would anyone else care to address the board this morning? So I'll close the public comment session, and we'll move on to constituent concerns. Let me just say this. I want to call on Cody Grassi and Travis Donaldson to provide an update regarding the FEMA mitigation and buyout program. So welcome, Cody.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Travis is coming up. Just want to brief you on the mitigation program that's been approved by FEMA since last month. Early last month, they approved it, notified the state for two of our applications submitted by Haywood County of the four, and so we have been in discussion with the state since about late January, mid to late January, on what that would look like. The first project, disaster 4588, 20 properties were approved for acquisition, and then for 4617, 10 properties were approved for acquisition in Haywood County. So we've had 30 properties approved that were submitted through those two projects. Right now, we're working through the process to finalize the MOAs, Memorandums of Agreement, which are like contracts between Haywood County and the state. We're finalizing some language. This is the first time that the state, or I'm sorry, the second time that the state has done this with a county. So we're working through what that language looks like in those before we send it through our county legal and through the process of approval, where it's more of an informal conversation. And the concept that we're going for is state-centric mitigation. That means that the state will come in, they will purchase the property, they will hire the folks to come in and demolish the property, return it to natural vegetative state, and then they'll hand it back to us as the county. Our obligation is to work with the state so that we are, we continue to serve as point of contact for the community, we're the one-stop shop for the citizen in Haywood County, and any questions they have for the state, we're the pass-through for that. So we're working through, again, the language of that contract as we move forward. Right now, next steps are to finalize the MOA and then get it to county legal through that process, and then to you for final approval. Again, we're just working through that language with their lawyers. Then, once that MOA is approved by you, or considered by you, and altered, or whatever, then we'll move forward with the county, or I'm sorry, the state contacting the property owners, scheduling appraisal times, and then moving forward with the acquisition process of acquiring the property, hiring the contractors for demolition, and we'll see a timeline. Currently, as they've told myself, Travis, and Zach, they're estimating the period of performance today. If we started today, but we might have to wiggle a month or two somewhere, they anticipate the period of performance to end on March 2025. So they would expect currently in the MOA that we would have all 30 deeds back, deed restricted, vegetative state, in a little over a year. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Cody, I appreciate your work on this, you, Travis, and Zach all. I know, I know you've hadn't, didn't have nothing else to do, dealing with all this flood stuff, but no kidding, I appreciate your time and what y'all have done. But I guess, a question I have is, so at this time, we have not reached out to those 30 property owners, is that correct? Is that what I hear you saying?
We have. There's about eight on my list that I haven't been able to make contact with. So this week, instead of trying to do phone call, it's going to be an in-person conversation. The goal here was that we had an actual conversation instead of just an email sent out, because that, there's some things I need to go through that might be misunderstood in an email. So the goal here is that those eight this week would receive an in-person visit, you know, just hey, you know, and that way we can go over anything, any questions they have. I hope you understand, email leads a lot to question, and so instead of having that back and forth, it's best to do that. We are not, let me be clear, we are not losing any time by doing this, because we're still working on the MOA, the contract and everything. So there is no time lost in this total project by us taking time to, you know, address the citizen face-to-face, or at least over the phone, or something like that.
Okay, that's my next question. I didn't know, timing-wise. And speaking of timing, do you know how long it'll take before the public's aware of what the offers are? Because I know that when the gentleman come last, last time with the state, he had said that there's a certain period there that they can agree with the offer or not, and then there's a chance of getting it reappraised at that time. Do you know, timing-wise, how all that'll work?
We've been told, and based upon going, looking back at the October meeting and whatnot, today, my understanding is that 90 days from the time that we put ink on contract MOA, or really a little bit shorter than that, but just kind of give them a little wiggle room, property owners will be contacted by the state to schedule appointments for appraisal, and then appraisers will be sent out somewhere in there. I know the state is currently working on the bids for their RFBs for demolition, and I think appraisal in there too. So they're, they're also ahead of this. We're working ahead of ourselves a little bit in a couple ways. The contract, the MOA coming up behind is the only thing that we're just, you know, trying to stitch together. But I think, I think at least the citizen's going to get a, is going to get a phone call within 90 days of our action, and that's reassuring. And also, if we look at the period of performance being March 2025, there's not a lot of time in there. So I anticipate, again, still that 90 days, and that's where I'm going with it right now. I'm pretty confident that we're going to at least get contact and appraisers on-site within 90 days. We might not have the final number, but at least people are seeing actionable results happening.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Where, how are the appraisers determined? Where do they come from? Are they state appraisers, or are they independent appraisers?
Originally, they were, I think they were going to be on staff appraisers, but the way I understand it now is that the state is looking at bidding out appraisal. So it will come from the state one way or the other, whether that's someone on their staff. They're juggling a lot of projects, and so I don't know if they have enough bandwidth with the staff on, that they have on staff. But I do know that they'll come from the state, they won't come from us.
Okay. And then you said there were 30 properties approved. What was the total number of properties in the entire pool?
We had just north of 50. Off the top of my head, I think we had 52 that had applied total. We have 30 approved today. And that's, people have withdrawn, or like Mr. McGugan from the state in October, whenever he addressed the board, there were some that the state did not accept into the program.
Okay. So that will be the total number, will be 30?
Will be 30. There is an additional property, one additional property, so it'll likely be 31. That additional property is a historic site by date. It was built in, before 1900. So the state has to go through an extra process to make that a, to get that acquired and mitigated. They anticipate there's not going to be an issue, it's just that we have to run it through a couple more things, so we can't say that for sure it's in or out. But it looks like they have budgeted for it, they have got everything ready for it, in the anticipation that it would be approved. in the anticipation that it would be approved.
So a total of thirty-one is what?
Thirty-one, yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so there will be, under constituent concerns, we will be conducting a public hearing during the regular meeting on February nineteenth, which is our next meeting, to receive comments on the proposed amendments to the County of Haywood, North Carolina Code of Ordinances. Details will be published in a public hearing notice that will run this Wednesday, February seventh, and next Wednesday, February fourteenth, in the Mountaineer legal notices, and will be posted on the county website. Proposed revisions will be posted on the county website, and hard copies will be available during business hours here in the administration office and at the main branch of the Haywood County Library, starting this Wednesday. And then, on another note, there will be three special meetings prior to the regular meeting on February nineteenth to conduct interviews for the Haywood County Community Board of Trustees, also the Board of Equalization and Review, and the Town of Waynesville and Canton Representatives for the Tourism Development Authority Board. The times of these meetings will be in the public notice, which will be issued by February fifteenth at the latest. And I also want to note this morning, I was a little bit remiss, Tommy Long is not here today because he is in Chapel Hill. He was, he was able to get into, the school of government is doing a program for the Center for Public Leadership and Governance, and so Tommy was able to attend that, and I appreciate him taking time out of his busy schedule, and he'll be down there all week doing that. So I know he'll come back with a lot of good information for the county, for the county commissioners and their county. So I appreciate Tommy doing that. So that's why he's not here this morning. He's doing county business, he's just not here. Okay, so does anyone have any other constituent concerns? Do you have anything, Jen, or Brandon?
I guess just to address the two ladies that spoke this morning, I appreciate y'all coming, giving us your feedback and comments. I did have one constituent that reached out to me last night that felt the same, and I can say that I share your concerns as well. You know, our demographics are changing. Kevin and I sat down with the county manager and our finance director last week and talked about many things concerning the jail, and the demographics was one of them. You know, with our population changing, it seems that it's getting older instead of younger, so maybe some of our concerns may shift some. And also, the cost of sending the inmates out, you know, I know that that was a question of mine as well. What's it costing us now to send those inmates out, and the time that's involved, along with what this jail project's going to cost? So just wanted to say that I appreciate y'all coming this morning. However, there's another side of that as well. You know, I've got a neighbor that called and said, why are we letting people go? You know, he had an issue with a truck that was stole from his farm, and the guy drilled a hole in the gas tank, gas leaked all over his property, he had to clean it up. The guy was back out on the street almost before he could get his property cleaned up. So I can promise everybody, we're looking at the entire project and trying to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money, and that's what I can promise you I'm doing. So thank you for coming, and we will consider everything.
I just want to thank them for coming too, because there's a lot of concerns there. We don't know how the economy's going to turn or whatever, and that's one of my main concerns. And then, we've got to look, you know, we've got to think of the tax increase, and I don't want to see that if we can help it. But we do need, you know, more jail space, but I think we need a lot of recovery stuff too, to try to keep these people from going in and out of jail over and over. And so it's a hard issue to work out, but I think we'll get it worked out in the end with everybody's help. And thank everybody for coming.
And I do appreciate the comments that were made. I will say, on construction overruns, I guess occasionally you have those, but I've been a commissioner for almost twenty years, and I think I've been a part of almost every project, from this building over here to the parking deck, to the current law enforcement center, to the remodel of this, and I don't think we had any cost overruns, because we manage that, we have a great staff, we had a construction manager on-site on all those, and we made sure that they followed the plans. And I'm sure things might come up. This site's a little bit challenging, if you will, but I think we've done our due diligence and done the borings that we need to make sure about that. So I'm pretty confident that won't happen. And then, on the mental health piece, I did want to comment, we've asked, and I'm going to continue to ask, the state and federal government to step up and start giving funding to the mental health crisis that we have in this country. Used to, we funded mental health, and we didn't have the problems we have today. And so the state and federal government have basically not funded that the way they should have, and I've said this many times, Sheriff Christopher was talking one day, and he said, these people need to be institutionalized. And I told him, I said, but we don't have any institutions to put them in, because the state has done away with them. We used to have, I'm not sure what, we used to have, Broughton down in Morganton, I think it's a lot smaller than it used to be. And I could go into why I think all this has happened, but I won't. But really, what we need to do is to get our state and federal government to step up. They brag about their surpluses, and they need to step up with some of those surpluses and put them back into their communities, because it's costing the communities by us having to build jails and by not having the mental health funding that we really need. I know our young people, I think more than anything, our young people in our schools probably have a very challenging life in growing up with all the social media pressures and everything. And I would love to see us be able to put counselors in schools. I know we talked at a meeting the other night, and there was a girl there made a very good comment about mental health counselors in our schools. So I think, I think that's where it needs to start. I mean, we don't have, the county has never had funding for mental health, and we never have done that, because that would just be a new department, if you will. So, but I think the state and federal government can step up and get back to their priorities that they had before now. So I think that would be something that really needs to take place. And I know I and a lot of the nonprofits that deal in that see that need and would like to see that happen, so. Okay, and that would be my comments on that issue. Okay, we'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations, and the only thing we have here is the enhancing ambulance availability, and we have our emergency services director, Travis Donaldson, here this morning to speak to that. And I do want to say that, you know, I talked to Travis yesterday, some of our family had to deal with EMS, and I wanted to tell you, Travis, and the staff that took care of my family, that they were very much bragging on your staff and what they were having to deal with. And I always say that people, when EMS comes, you're having a bad day. It's a bad day, probably the worst, one of some of the worst days in your life. And I know it was in this instance. So I appreciate your staff and their professionalism and their help, so just want to give you a shout out, and please convey that to them, that we really appreciate all that they do.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Travis's crew too, for, they really helped us the other night up there, and they went way beyond what they had to do to make sure everything went smooth. When my friend passed away, or well, before he passed away, they came up there, and it was a real challenging situation up there, I'm sure you've heard about it, but they did an excellent job, and I'm really proud of them.
Thank y'all. We have some really, really good staff, so we're blessed with that. I'm here to talk to you guys today about where we're at with EMS in Haywood County, some of the challenges that we're facing, and some options going forward. So the title of the presentation is enhancing ambulance availability. Obviously, we've got some availability issues. Our call volume is increasing leaps and bounds each year due to a number of circumstances, and we're kind of falling behind what we need to be able to service the community with the ambulances and staff that we have out there on the road today. So this presentation here is going to dive into that a little bit. Thank you, Amy. Just a little factual slide here, as call volume increases, availability decreases. Our trucks are stationed out in the county, available to answer calls. Obviously, as our call volume increases throughout the day, throughout the year, those trucks are then tied up on calls and not available for the next 911 call to respond to that next call. Factual data here, new study coming out of Saudi Arabia, talking about the survivability of somebody that goes into cardiac arrest. And this particular study looks at response time of less than eight minutes, so that's from the time that the 911 call is placed to the time that an actual ambulance arrives on scene, starts taking care of them. But again, this study looked particularly at the eight-minute threshold. If we get there less than eight minutes, your chances of survival are two and a half times greater than if we get there after eight minutes. So that's a fairly fresh dataset that's coming. Next slide, Amy. This next slide looks at a period in time from January first to December fourteenth, looking at our Haywood County EMS cardiac arrest response time. It's just one dataset here. Currently, our average response time in this timeframe was eight minutes and forty-one seconds, taken into effect, into account that the time at the call center, from the time the person called 911 to the time the dispatcher got our ambulance dispatched, is also on top of this number. So we're a little bit behind that eight-minute mark that we were talking about in that previous slide with the study. So that's where we're at with that particular dataset. Currently, Haywood County EMS staffs six ambulances around the clock with one supervisor and a quick-response vehicle. Those are, again, seven days a week, around the clock. We've got bases in Bethel, Maggie, Waynesville, Clyde, and Canton. Additionally, there are two daytime trucks that work seven A to seven P, seven days a week, one of those stationed in Canton, and one of them stationed here in Waynesville. At times, we do have difficulty staffing all of those trucks. We have a lot of long-term outages, short-term outages, sickness, sick callouts. So in 2023, there were a hundred and twenty times during 2023 that we were not able to staff one of those trucks. Next slide's looking at call volume of the past decade. In 2023, we're running six ambulances around the clock. Our call volume was nine thousand eight hundred and thirteen. You see a couple other datasets there with some red bullets. 2018, we added another daytime truck in 2018 to kind of catch up with call volume. Between 2018, 2019 is when Haywood County EMS had to start picking up non-emergency transports after some issues with their previous provider. So that was that sharp increase from 2018 to 2019, and y'all helped us out by adding another daytime truck to try to tackle that. You'll see the dip in 2020. That was the COVID scare, nobody wanted to go to the hospital. Everybody, for a short period of time, at least anyway, didn't want to call 911, didn't want to go to the hospital or doctor, in fear for getting sick themselves. Next slide. This next slide is looking at calls per ambulance, and this is just taking that last slide and doing a little math. 2013, with the number of trucks that we had, those trucks, the way it massed out, sixteen hundred and thirty-six calls per truck during 2013. Come along, obviously, you see the, kind of the same trend line that you did in the last slide, rising, quick dip, and then back up. And in 2023, we finished out with twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and thirty-five calls per truck, so quite a bit of difference there as far as workload that our folks are seeing out in the field. This next slide here is convalescent call volume. These are the non-emergency transports. These are returns back to nursing homes from the hospital. These are nursing homes to doctors' offices, any of those trips there. So I've only got back to 2019, because before that, we only did these in rare occasion. 2019 was when we had to pick them back up due to the previous provider issue. So you see those steadily increasing. 2019, we did just over a thousand, and 2023, we did twenty-two hundred and twelve. So quite a bit of increase in the past couple of years. I don't see that slowing down, just like our regular call volume. Next slide you're looking at is actual patient transports. Obviously, we don't transport every single patient that calls 911. Folks have the opportunity to refuse to go to the hospital. If we get there, we check them out. These are car wrecks that people call in, and, you know, we do refusals with just folks not wanting any care whatsoever. Or these are also patients that we go out and treat for diabetic hypoglycemia. We give them medication, bring their sugar back up, and they don't have to go to the hospital, but those folks are included in those numbers as well. So 2023, we actually transported ten thousand one hundred and thirteen patients. And then, that slide, or excuse me, the graph beside it there is actually insurance revenue from those transports there. Again, all these trend lines kind of mimic each other, obviously, they all correlate to call volume, which is why I'm here talking today. This next slide here is talking a little bit about what we have been doing to try to adjust for these heavier call volumes. At times, when all our trucks get busy, or we get two trucks or less available in the county, we go into a status that we refer to as call stacking. Basically, if somebody calls 911, the dispatcher asks medical questions and deems that it's not an emergency call, to where time is of the essence, those calls get dispatched or put in a queue for routine, so we're not going there lights and sirens. So once we get to a certain level of trucks available, that being two or less, we start stacking those. That way, we don't send our last two ambulances out on a routine call. The third call that comes in is somebody having a heart attack, and we've sent our last two trucks out on what the dispatchers have deemed as a routine call. So those are some data figures there that you can see where we've done that the past couple of years, and obviously, those numbers keep growing each year as well. Some of the factors that I think are driving our call volume here in the county, we're a retirement destination for a lot of folks right now. People of retirement age have medical problems, most of them do at least, and so they're entering the healthcare system a lot of times through EMS, through an emergency room. So that's driving a lot of our call volume. Haywood County's population as a whole is aging. Even if you subtract the retirement folks that are moving here, we get older every day. So we've got a lot of baby boomers that are starting to get ofaged, or they're having more and more medical problems and having to call 911 or use us for assistance, so that's something else. And then, our population growth that we're seeing in general here, you see houses going up, developments going up. Obviously, the more people here, the more likelihood they are to call 911. So we've got several factors driving that. A lot of stuff you see on the news too. You've seen HCA on the news a lot recently with wait times in the ERs and stuff like that. That affects us, because if we're having to wait to offer That affects us because if we're having to wait to offload that patient, we're not available to get back out there and answer that next call because we're still setting, taking care of that patient that we should have already offloaded, you know, minutes ago. So that, again, affects our ambulance availability. We work every day trying to resolve that, but with the healthcare system being kind of taxed at times here recently, that's difficult to achieve what we want to with goals there. This next slide here is talking some of the benefits of an option that I'm going to kind of present in adding some BLS transport units. These are going to be focused on answering those non-emergent transport calls, that 2,200 calls a year that currently our 911 trucks are mixed in answering 911 calls or doing transports. So we're going to increase availability of those 911 trucks by having these dedicated trucks to run these routine transports. It also allows us to start a career path for EMTs coming in. A BLS transport, that's an EMT. That's not all the paramedic medications. That's not advanced skills. That's the basic, that's an AED, a few bandages, supplies, oxygen, which EMTs are able to administer. So that, it's a little bit easier to staff that truck because there are more EMTs and paramedics. But it starts a career path for these EMTs, entering into the business, entering into the field, get a taste of it, do their transports, get to spend some patient time doing vital signs and just interacting and kind of seeing what it's about. And hopefully, eventually, having an interest to become a paramedic, which obviously will entertain moving them up through the ranks and welcome them aboard, having them as an ALS provider. A big benefit is boosting morale for my current staff. Most paramedics don't necessarily go to paramedic school to go do non-emergency transports. They're adrenaline junkies. They like to get in there and get their hands dirty and take care of people and make a difference, doing advanced skills and medications and stuff that they were trained for. So unfortunately, having them tied down doing these non-emergency transports, we take some of that away from them. And it is a little bit of a deterrent for folks, especially if they're looking at us as an employer, knowing that they might have to be doing that versus the fun stuff that they went to school for. BLS units are more cost-effective due to only having to have the basic medications and the basic supplies on it versus an ALS ambulance with all the medications and all the advanced supplies. So that's another factor there. This next slide is just a cost analysis, what it would look like if we did the same thing with an ALS ambulance with paramedics versus a BLS ambulance with just EMTs. So just running down to the final cost there. The total cost for an EMT-staffed ambulance, for actually, sorry, two EMT-staffed ambulances, is 757,000 versus two paramedic-level ambulances at 1,240,000 for the year. This next slide is just some additional factors to consider. Medic-7, which is one of our daytime trucks, in the near future, we need to look at eventually making that truck an around-the-clock 24-hour truck. In the past, our call volume has dictated that six ambulances at night were enough, but it's a regular occasion now that you're in the middle of the night, six is not enough, and we're out of ambulances completely at 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Unfortunately, during that time of the day, office staff are not in the office. We're not available to readily go jump on another ambulance sitting out in the bay and dive in and help with call volume. The trucks that are there and the supervisor that are there are kind of on their own for the night. So that definitely does affect some capabilities during the night. Another factor, another option to look at in the future is investigating a system status management software piece that integrates with our current CAD system. Basically, it allows better resource management without a lot of human interaction based on formulas and criteria that we set within the program itself. Looking five years down the road, everybody's seeing the population growth on Jonathan Creek. I think probably within the next five years, we're going to have to look at staffing the truck somewhere in the Jonathan Creek area, just to start tackling the call volume that's going to increase in that area based on population growth. And the last measure to consider is we've got two unfunded positions that are on Medicaid. We staff those with part-timers. Our part-time pool used to be very robust. Seems like every couple of months, it dwindles a little bit more. People that work part-time for us in EMS generally work full-time, either as a nurse, respiratory therapist, a paramedic somewhere else. And those entities have plenty of open overtime shifts that these people can pick up. So it's a no-brainer for them to go pick up an overtime shift at their full-time employer versus coming to work for us for a 12-hour shift at straight time. So that's a big factor for us, with our part-time continuing to dwindle down. So something else to look at in the near future. I don't have anything else unless I have any questions.
Perhaps I know that we talked before about the eight-minute average timeframe, which is concerning to me. You know, if I've got a loved one, or to be honest, any of our county residents who needs an ambulance, especially in a cardiac arrest situation, you know, I know that eight-minute timeframe is critical. And I know our average is like 8:41 or something like that, which you said didn't include the time calling and putting the call out. And if you look, the other half of the time, from what we're seeing, is actually above that eight minutes. So we're actually behind. You know, it needs to be, our average time should be around four minutes, you know, so that we're under that eight minutes on all our calls. So it is a concern of mine. I know also another concern is the timeframe that our ambulances are out of service. And I know we talked about the ambulances sitting at the hospital as well, and we're working on that. But there's also another cost in there. I know you'd mentioned the oxygen cost, patients sitting there on oxygen. You know, we've got to continue to give them oxygen, which is, our oxygen costs have seemed to rise here lately as well. So a lot of concerns looking over all this information, and I know we're trying to take the steps to address these and move forward. But really, no questions, just a few comments. So thank you for your report.
Travis, I'd like to say that, you know, I believe that EMS is the one service that everybody has the opportunity, whether you want it or not, to get to use. It's probably one of the most important, if not the most important service that I think we provide as a county, whether you are a resident, full-time, part-time, visiting, young, old, all the things, you have the opportunity, like I said, whether you want it or not. So I think it's real important. I've had several calls, and I certainly don't want to open a hornet's nest on this, but I've had several calls about this, and I 100% believe that your thoughts in the direction is exactly how we need to go. We have to provide a quality service, particularly for these convalescent transports. And I don't know that everybody understands exactly what that is, and so correct me if when I'm telling the story, I get it wrong. But if somebody is in a care facility, for instance, a nursing home or assisted living, something like that, and they have to go to a doctor's appointment, dialysis, trip to the hospital, oftentimes, that requires ambulance transport, correct?
Correct.
And you have to have an EMS worker, a paramedic currently on-site the entire time. It's not just to drop them off and leave and come back and get them. And that's why we're getting so backed up on those calls. So I think this is, I think it's very important that we put this in place. Paramedics do not have great career longevity because of the stress and the hours and just how it affects their bodies. So when I was approached, like I said, I've had several phone calls about this, I want to be really clear that we have to provide the best service for the people in the community. And I feel like this is a great way to staff it and to protect our citizens and, as well as our paramedics and our employees. So I did tell the folks that contacted me that we would make the best decision for the citizens, and I think that's the way to move forward. Can you give us a little background about what happened prior to 2019, about why we picked those convo calls up after 2019?
Prior to 2019, I actually think it started, if memory serves me correct, back in 2007. The Haywood County Rescue Squad started, or was given, the responsibility of handling non-emergency transports in Haywood County. Those trips to the, from the nursing home to the doctor's office or to dialysis or, you know, discharges from the hospital that required an ambulance, they carried those through 2018 and shut the doors for, I guess it was probably around a year, due to some issues that they had internally at that point in time. Obviously, we, as the county EMS, started picking those back up. About a year into it, we added a truck to kind of deal with those. But prior to the 2018, 2019 timeframe, we weren't dealing with them except for an occasion if the rescue squad couldn't get to them or were backed up. So unfortunately, we had to pick those up and stomach them. My staff picked up the bird and carried it and carried it well, but it's like you said a minute ago, it wears on them. Career lifespan for paramedics, five years or less at this point on the national average. So we need to make the best that we can and keep them as happy and take care of them the best we can so we, hopefully, we can get a little bit more than five years out of them, but support them all we can while they're here working for us, so.
Yeah, I think there is a little bit of a, I don't know if it's a local colloquialism. Whenever we call in to, we as residents call in to 911, I think there is a misconception about who is sent to us. And so when someone calls in with a medical emergency to 911 and those calls are dispatched, it's actually EMS that's showing up. I think, as everybody knows, I have a son who is an active fireman, and he says a lot of times they'll say, "The rescue squad is on the way." But really, it's our EMS paramedics that's the provider. And I can't say enough good things about, like Kevin said, I mean, we all have the opportunity. We hope we don't use them, but obviously, we are using them. And I just want to be really clear that our intention with this is to provide the absolute best service for our loved ones and our neighbors, and I think this is the best way to do it.
Thank you.
Travis, what you're having to sit at the merch room and stuff, is that getting any better, where y'all are having to sit out there and wait so long? I've been getting a lot of people telling me they've been sitting in the merch room, you know, a day and a half sometimes waiting on service out there. And I know that's not part of our control or anything like that, but it sure does hurt the county, you know? Is it getting any better?
I can speak to the fact that I have more communication, better communication with our local hospital administration than I've had in the past several years. We meet monthly to work through issues and try to make that process better. Our call volume surges a lot. It surges in Buncombe County, and it starts to bog down the hospitals. It's getting better than what it was, but it still has, it's a roller coaster. It can be a really good week this week, and next week, it could be just the opposite, and we start having some extended wait times. But again, I communicate with those folks out there regularly, trying to work through the issues and try to get our trucks freed up to answer that next 911 call, almost on a daily basis sometimes, trying to work through those issues, so.
Appreciate you really working on that, because I know that has to be frustrating when you're trying to get it worked out and things don't go exactly right, or when they do go right, it's good.
Yeah, it's frustrating for my providers, too, because they're very type A, they went to school, their function and their purpose at work is to go answer 911 calls and take care of sick people. And when you do your job and get them to the hospital, and at that point, should expect to transfer that care, and you get held up, you know, just basically sitting there because we can't get to that next step, it's definitely frustrating to my providers, just because that's not how they're programmed.
We're overall seeing fewer diversions, though, from the local, from our local hospital. And at one time, that was very high.
We are. That's another one of these monthly meetings I'm having with them, trying to get that in a whole lot better place, because in the past, it has been a significant issue for us locally.
Everybody's still fighting staffing issues in the medical field for sure, and that's all, it trickles down to all of us. So we appreciate, I appreciate what you do. It's tough.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to follow up on what Commissioner Best is saying, is we want to take care of our employees as well. And I know currently, they're working long hours, and I don't want to see us burning them out, you know, especially if I'm the one that hears the sirens coming, you know, I want somebody to come in that's fresh and sharp and not, you know, wore out from working all the hours that they work. So that's a piece of this, too, is trying to take care of our employees.
Yeah, they're making less and less paramedics every year, so we got to take care and nurture what we've got.
Hard enough to get them as it is, so. Got to take care of them when we get them.
Okay, Brian.
Just real quick, I've talked to the hospital CEO, Chris Brown, about this plan twice. He was going to try to make it to the meeting this morning to voice his support of the program as outlined by Travis. Just to let you know, the hospital does support this, and they see the advantages for the things that you folks have already said.
I'm excited that it provides a future career path, too, because that is, I know you and I have talked about what age typically these folks in these positions are, and they're young and athletic and healthy, and it's a great opportunity for these young people coming out of high school or the early years of college to be able to come in and advance their careers. So that's really pretty forward-thinking.
And I appreciate your analytical approach to making sure, you know, getting, I guess your ducks in a row, if you will, on this, Travis. We've, and along what Jennifer was saying about the rescue squad, I think Haywood County's rescue squad was the first EMS in the county, probably in the '70s. And before that, my dad told me, before that, the funeral homes did EMS stuff, so if that's what you want to.
It'd be bad if they took you to the wrong place.
Yeah, that's right. They were, they didn't let the grass go under their feet. But anyway, they, that's what, that's what, that's what they did before the '70s, you know, the funeral homes kind of did that. So, and now, this service has become one of the most integral parts of our county that our residents expect to be staffed well, and they want them to be there when they need them. So, and they are there when they need them, and we want to make sure that continues to happen, and so, but I appreciate all that, Travis, so.
Thank you.
You don't need to take action or anything.
It's in the agenda further down the.
Later on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we'll move on to discussion or adjustment agenda. Does anybody have anything? I did, I did want to ask Sheriff, did you want to comment on the jail, anything? Did you have anything you wanted to say? I should have asked you when we were having that discussion. Yeah, if you had some thoughts or something that you wanted to share with.
Sir, yes.
Come on up to the mic, so everybody can hear you. Sorry I didn't get you up here.
No, that's fine. I'm happy to do that. So several things come to mind. I'll try to keep this short. Number one, as we look at the financial cost, certainly, we have to consider the effect on taxpayers. It's really hard to put those costs into terms when we have a loss in our community and to kind of bring those things together. It's very rare. And to, to, to kind of bring those things together, it's very rare that someone dies in jail. Just about every day, you can find a story where someone dies outside of jail. I have tried to get the message out to the community and to folks that it's not an opposing argument to have a jail and to have recovery. It has been my intent to bring those two together. They're actually congruent, because I believe that recovery can start in the jail, and it's a very important aspect of that. And I don't want us to be lost in the idea that it's an either or argument. It's not, it's actually congruent. So, uh, I would just ask that as you consider this going forward, that you remember that. Ultimately, we don't decide what the bonds are or how long a person stays in jail, but I can tell you for the time that they are there, they will be clean, healthy, and kept in a manner where they're well fed. And a lot of times, our folks who suffer from opioid use disorder or addiction to meth or whatever they're suffering from, don't get that on the outside world. So they actually get a chance. So it's, I view it more in terms of an investment into our community. It's difficult to make folks understand that, but the vast majority of Americans don't live in a world that law enforcement does and folks suffering with addiction do. It's a very dark and strange world. And to an outsider, it would appear that, well, we don't want them to go to jail, we want them to go to recovery. In fact, those two can come together. And I will tell you, my personal opinions is that a jail, a larger jail in Haywood County, even considering the costs and what it may take to finance those costs, is a contribution towards recovery. It's a contribution towards the health and the welfare of this community. And I, I will tell you, I don't want to fill those jail cells. That's, it's, it's not what I want to do unless it's an opportunity to change or improve a life. I don't have any statistics here before me today, but in my discussions with the chief and our reintegration programs manager, a very rough figure of the people that we have in jail is about 10% that take advantage of Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous. And it would appear that it's very small, but what I'll tell you, the other 90% or so that we have there are people that are looking to go to prison, that have been charged with other crimes, but that the 10% that we have, just looking, taking a qualitative look, because we don't, we don't have a data set that gives us solid information, but taking a qualitative look, looking at the partnership with Recovery Court, looking at all the other things that, that Haywood County has done to bring us together, we're seeing some small wins. And I've heard it said, even if we only save one person, it's worth it, and that's true. But we're well beyond that, and it, it, it may only be 10%, but it's value added to this community. And my, my hope is, as that begins to build and as those things take off, we're going to continue to increase, we're going to set a model for the rest of the state. But it's also important to remember that accountability for crimes and keeping people safe from continued criminal activity, how do, how do you also put a financial cost on that? Commissioner Rogers, you, you, you mentioned getting a call from a constituent, I get those all the time. You know, if these folks weren't in jail, or if they were in jail, these things wouldn't occur. And there is an expectation from our constituents that we hold them accountable, and we keep people in jail who need to be in jail until such time as they go before a judge. And so with those factors in mind, I would present that to you for your consideration, and I, I appreciate your time and your invite to come forward and share those thoughts with you. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
You, you support the, the project?
Yes, wholly support the project. Again, the, the financial aspect of that is not within my realm. I, I don't, the last thing you want me to do is to do the accounting, that's why we have good people to, to take care of that, because I, in whole, um, I, I think it's of great benefit to this community in ways that, um, I haven't been able to get the message out. We don't like to look at a jail as, as progress. It's a jail, you associate that with punishment and crime and all these things, and that's true. But it's also a place where people are safe and get a restart and get a shot at life. And it's, you know, it comes through our reintegration programs manager and the other efforts that we've put in place in the last several months to make it so. And it's going to grow. It's going to continue to grow.
And then I, I think also Sheriff, the former sheriff, Christopher, also supported.
I, I can't speak for him, but I recall public comments to that effect, yes, sir.
Right, yeah, he did, and stuff, so. And I appreciate you continuing the programs he had along these lines. Because you're a lot, you know, you're right, whenever they're in jail, it's a captive audience, and they, you know, and we have volunteers that go in there to try to help as much as they can.
They, they do, and I, and I'll say this, you know, few people have the experience of having to do death notifications to a family who knew it was coming. I've, I've heard that many times, I knew this day was coming. And, um, how good would it be for any of us to never have to do that again? And, uh, I'm convinced that's possible. And I'm, I'm going to keep working as long as I can to ensure that it doesn't happen.
Anybody else have any comment or questions for Sheriff? I knew you'd have great insight, so I appreciate you coming and sharing it with me.
Well, I appreciate it. And, yeah, while I have the opportunity, I have to throw out, uh, big thanks to the people that work for EMS, um, and for all of our public safety. Our, our sheriff's deputies interact with him all the time. I, I really appreciate the, the, the effort, the collaborative effort to work together. And, and we have a great sheriff's office, not because of me, but because of the people that work there. And I, I want to continue to send that message. Haywood County has an incredible sheriff's office, not because of Bill Wilkie, but because of the people that come to work every day and do what they do to make this community a better place to live, so.
What's nice is us as commissioners, we don't like those phone calls that come in that says there's an issue. And I think I can speak for all of us that we don't get those calls from, from our EMS and, and our sheriff's department, other than praise. And, uh, that's refreshing to know, and, uh, we, we've got good people, we've got good employees across the county.
Yes, we do.
You know, I may be a little partial, but I think we got the best.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you.
I, I would be curious going forward, can we get some numbers, some fresh numbers about the number of inmates or people in, in detention that we are transporting out and holding someplace else?
Yes, ma'am.
And also numbers about our, I forgot what you called him, Recovery Court Assistant, the guy that is supposed to be, I'd like to see those numbers. Only because I think it's important that we present everything, all of our efforts, to the public as we go forward. This is a huge decision for all of us, because it's going to affect us for a long time as far as taxes, and I just would like to have the whole picture and just be able to present that all at one time about how we, whatever decision we arrive at, that, how we arrive there. So if you could get those numbers, not to put you on the spot, but.
No, I, I'm, I'm happy to do that. In fact, we've been engaged in ongoing discussions about getting those numbers. Frankly, because it's such a new program, even deciding what to measure and how is, is something we still don't have a full grasp of, only because you have so many people come and go. How are we, how are we measuring recidivism if someone gets arrested and released here, but we don't know if they get arrested and released in another county or in another state? And so I can tell you, um, we're getting that together. I am not confident that we will be able to affirmatively say, the, this is the, the, the data that I will stand behind for another 12 to 18 months. However, getting preliminary numbers is what we're in the process of doing now, and we're currently working on that. What I have, I will be happy to provide. I, I just want to do a little bit of expectation management going forward, because a lot of this, because it's so new to our staff, it's to us, and other programs in other counties throughout the state have something similar, but they're all different. We're trying to figure out what works best for Haywood County. And so we'll, we'll get that. So yes, ma'am, we will get you those numbers, but just keep in mind that those could change and parameters and factors are going to change going forward depending upon how we measure, measure success. We're, we're, we're doing a number of things. And just one example is Alcoholics Anonymous has something called Bridging the Gap. And we're using that model currently for, for folks that are suffering from opioid use disorder, and, and essentially Narcotics Anonymous does the same thing. But who meets them as soon as they walk outside, out of the jail? Who's there to take them and shepherd them along in the road to recovery? And right now, we have several organizations willing to help with that, and we're using that model. We're waiting to see what the results of that are, and measuring those statistics, a lot of times because of HIPAA and some other things, are difficult to get our arms around. But we're working on that, and we're working on it just about every day. So I will have some preliminary numbers for you in the very near future, ma'am. What that looks like, I'm, I'm not real sure at this point, but yes, ma'am.
Sure, that's fine, and that's fair. I mean, at least we would know what the efforts are and how those, the direction of those efforts are going, and maybe it's not old enough maybe to have results, but definitely going in the right direction. And then if we could, I know Sheriff Christopher in the past had presented us with, um, numbers of, I guess, people in detention that you're having to ship out because of occupancy levels. Occupancy is probably not the right word, but, um, the number of people that you could house according to state standards in the facility. And that will also give us some additional, because you know, we're, we see our, our numbers increase just in our regular population, but it also increases during tourist time and things like that. So if you could provide that to us, I think that would be very helpful.
I'll be happy to do that. A lot of it's seasonal. The mark that we use is 80% of capacity, which is 86 people. That's just basically a, a, a standard that jails use, because once you get beyond that, it's difficult to keep certain folks i- involved in the same court case segregated. You have to keep them apart. There are a number of things, plus health issues, it gets more difficult. So, yes, ma'am, we'll, 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 we'll be happy to do that. Just when we start looking at, hey, you've got 109 beds, really the number for us is 86. The other thing that affects that is staffing. We are as close to being fully staffed in that jail as we ever have been, and I would anticipate, again, by summer, the way it's looking, um, to have full staffing. I don't anticipate staffing of the new jail to be an issue, but previous staffing concerns led to having to transport, because you have to have a certain number of staff there for, for the detainees that you had. So all of those factor into it, but we'll get to the bottom of it.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I see the staff is just, just kind of waiting them in as, as time goes on, and we add them a little bit at a time, you know?
Yeah, you added some last month, I believe. We announced some new employees that were in the detention center, so I think there were some.
Yes, ma'am. So we actually hired five from the mill. There was an, there was an article done in the Mountaineer about those individuals. I would encourage you to go back and read that. I knew they were doing an article, I hadn't talked to those employees prior. I, I was, I was happy to see what they, they had to say to the Mountaineer. And I think it's reflective on how our agency feels as a whole, working there. So I would encourage you to go back and take a look at that. The staff and I, the senior staff and I, the command staff make a, a concerted effort to stay connected to those that are doing the work. We walk through the jail, we ride out with the patrol deputies. One example is we're currently examining or doing a trial period for a shift change, but it's a trial period through March. We're kind of measuring it based on some standards, uh, some national standards, and we'll, we'll see. And we're going to be looking at that in the next six weeks or so. We're going to stay with that schedule, we'll go back to the old. So that was driven mostly by employee surveys, what they, what they thought would be a better schedule, and so we thought we'd try it. So we'll see how that works out. Things like that, so.
Look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That, thank you.
And then also on the, the substance abuse, you know, we think about drugs, fentanyl and everything, but really alcohol, I think, is the biggest drug. I know probably Sarah, our health director, would say that. I know Patrick Johnson said that more than once, that really by far alcohol is the biggest substance that's abused. So I'm glad to hear that AA is, uh, is really stepping up their game there to jail. And also I wanted to note, I know it was in the Mountaineer article, and I appreciate it, was, uh, the reason, one of the reasons we're having at on the jails, we, there was a satellite, we call it the satellite jail, which was next to the jail, and it's, it had 40 beds, and those beds are, um, those beds are, uh, that facility's outdated. The state continues to pass ordinances and laws to make sure that, that detainees are housed properly, and we, we've just kind of, uh, we lost those 40 beds, so, and that was not a good thing. And then, of course, the upgrades, uh, that we'll be doing to the existing jail will really keep our sheriff and his deputies safe and their, and the inmate safe, I believe. So it'll be, it'll be a good investment. But I appreciate your insight, Sheriff, and, uh, I, I wish I'd had you come up before, so, but appreciate you letting us know that. Okay, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any, any questions about the five, uh, items on the consent agenda?
Matt, number three, Kevin. That, uh, I see, uh, on that COVID-19 vaccination, on that, is that, is that for our health department to start giving COVID vaccinations, or what is the?
I think that's, I think that's what we passed before that was 70,000, I believe, running bright, and we, you want to comment on that, Sarah? This is our health director, Sarah Banks. Glad you came out today, Sarah.
Good morning. This one's actually attached to a new agreement agenda that we've been afforded. It's attached to what they're now calling a Bridge Access Program. For many years, we've had a vaccine for children program, where children who were uninsured and underinsured could receive vaccines for free at no cost to them or their families. The Bridge Access Program now does that with people who are 19 or older for COVID vaccines only. It cannot be used to purchase the vaccine. It can be used for wages and benefits, supplies, that sort of thing associated with the vaccine, but we cannot actually purchase the vaccine.
Did my, any questions?
Is this just for people that, that come in and ask for a vaccine, or?
It is. We can use it for education in the community also, but it covers, um, like I said, wages and benefits. If, if clients come in that are uninsured or even underinsured, so they have a, if they have an insurance plan that doesn't cover vaccines, um, we can also provide vaccine to them.
It's not to try to get people to take it, correct?
It is not.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Any other questions on the five items? And here now entertain the motion, will you approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Yes, sir, second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, you want to post? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda, and the item, the first item is to report on unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property per North Carolina General Statute 105, 369A, and approval to set the advertising date of March 27th, 2024, for the delinquent 2023 real estate taxes. And Sebastian or Catherine is our tax collector. Welcome this morning.
Thank you, and good morning, commissioners. So as per General Statute 105, 369, I'm reporting on the past due taxes as of January the 6th, which the 6th is the first day they became delinquent. The past due amount was $6,489,250.59 for a collection rate of 87.06%. As of this morning, the unpaid balance was down to $3,671,338 for a collection rate of 93.15%. And also I'm up here, I have to request approval to advertise in the Mountaineer on March the 27th of unpaid taxes that are a lien on real property.
Do I have any questions? Just want to say that don't ever get any, I do not ever get any complaints about you or your staff, so I appreciate that.
And I would like to thank my staff. Without them, I'd if I couldn't do my job. And the date that we are advertising is March 27th, so I just want everyone in the public to know the last day to pay to avoid being advertised is March the 22nd.
Okay, so March 22nd, if you don't want your name in the paper, you need to be.
What time, Sebastian? Is it four o'clock that day?
It's the end of the day. Yes, end of business on the 22nd.
If we come in at five o'clock.
Yeah, 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 almost at five, still would be good, right?
You have to tell five o'clock on the 22nd.
Okay.
So any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, I entertain a motion, will you approve item one of the regular agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, you want to post?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sebastian. Appreciate your work. Okay, number two is the request approval of a budget amendment for the sheriff of $19,800 to appropriate drug forfeiture funds collected and unspent in fiscal year '23. Funds will be used to, uh, for canine supplies, including the e-collar and food transportation charges for the Bearcat vest covers for deputies and network access for Clyde Town Hall. And Christian, tell us what the Bearcat is.
Okay, the Bearcat, Matt, you may, you may have to help me out. It is the armored vehicle we approved to purchase. I believe it was back in 2021. It was a used vehicle. It had to be outfitted, upgraded, and apparently we had borrowed other counties when we needed, um, that type of vehicle for response. It is now almost ready, and we have to pay to get that here. The cost for that specific transport is between $4,200 and $4,500. It is now almost ready, and we have to pay to get that here. The cost for that specific transport is between $4,200 and $4,500. Everything else covers the other items, primarily K-9 supplies and all of that.
You want to comment, ma'am?
So.
You're well dressed this morning, so.
Thank you, sir.
I want to get you on camera.
The, so like she said, the transport costs, from what I found when I went through everything, was not part of the figure in the beginning. So I think from what I've found out, the plan was to drive it back. I'd say 13 to 15 hours, I think, is the travel time, and it's only going to go about 60 miles an hour. So it'd probably take us about 20 hours to drive it back, plus.
Where's it, where's it located?
Maryland.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you don't go down I-85 on, on the.
I would prefer not with that size of.
You're not doing 85 or 90, you're going to, you're going to get run over, so. Okay. Although it probably wouldn't hurt it, but.
You'd probably get a lot of attention.
I'm sure we'd get a lot of attention all the way back, so.
Any questions on this for Christian or Matt? Okay, well, I'm glad we're using not taxpayer money. This is drug forfeiture money, so crime does pay, I guess, sometimes.
Pays to help us.
It pays to help us, yeah. Pays to help us get them. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item two?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, you need a discussion at all? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, number three is the request approval of a budget amendment for EMS $750,000 to appropriate fund balance for five full-time EMTs and two equipped ambulances for expanded services, which Travis just so well went over earlier. So go ahead, Travis. I guess it's just.
Yeah, this is the financial piece to what I spoke about for the problem, the presented solution. This, making this appropriation allows us for, to go ahead and start tackling this problem now. Instead of waiting till budget, the new budget happening in July, hopefully we can get this rolling and in place and staffed and mitigating some of this call volume within the next couple of months versus waiting till the middle of the year, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's a good idea to get started ahead of time. I think we did that when we were staffing up for our SRO officers with the sheriff's office. We wanted, it's hard sometimes to staff those people, those positions. What do, will this help at all when we have rehab and with our responding fire departments, if they're responding to something that would need their? Will this just free some of your units up so that they can respond to those rehab situations?
It, it will obviously decrease in some of this call load, frees us up to be able to support those fire departments if they need us and request us, so, yes.
So is that by request, the fire departments request you to come? Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I just want to be clear about that.
And again, that was for the, this is for the employees, the benefits, two ambulances. And these, let me make note that these will be smaller ambulances than what you normally see running around that we're running nine-on-one calls in. They're more of a van-style ambulance, cheaper to purchase, suitable for the need. We would, wouldn't want to be running a lot of nine-on-one calls out of these trucks because they're a lot smaller. So that is the biggest difference in your cost savings there and the, and the cost of the equipment, so.
Are they available?
There is, speaking to vendors, there are a lot of stock units that vendors have purchased in the past whenever the big shortage was going on, and a lot of those are getting ready to hit delivery. So I've spoke to several vendors that, that had them available. We just got to jump through the procurement process.
That's good.
Questions or comments? Okay, will someone make a motion for item three of the regular agenda?
I'll make the motion that we approve the budget amendment for 757 to appropriate for five full-time EMTs and two equipped ambulances for expanded service.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Appreciate all your hard work on this. Next order of business will be appointments. The first one is to request approval of the reappointment of Patricia Blake to a second three-year term and Anessa James to a second three-year term on the Smoky Mountain Event Center Board.
Ms. Chairman, the only thing that I would add is that the Smoky Mountain Event Center Board met on January 8th and voted unanimously to recommend the reappointment of both Ms. Blake and Ms. James to their second three-year term.
I think a board pretty well is fine with that.
Okay, good. Okay, so you want to make a motion, Terry, to?
Yes, I make.
Okay, Terry made a motion to approve item one. Have appointments. Does anyone have a second? Okay, you need a discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Number two is to request approval for appointments of Stephen Wall to the physician member position and Ella Churchill to the public member position on the HHSA board. And Brandon, I know you're on that committee.
Yeah, the board, the board did vote to accept both of these, and the vote was unanimous, so.
Just going to say the same thing.
Okay. Okay. Is, okay, so I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve item two of appointments?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Yeah, that concludes our agenda. We do not have a closed session. Does anybody have anything else to bring before the board? At here and now, I entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe.